It is six oh three. Thank you all for attending. This is our last meeting of two thousand and twenty and wanted to welcome this full voting members. I believe they received their letters or at least Bob was sworn in. Christine, were you able to get sworn in?
No, Greg, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. That's okay. I'm glad you're here and we'll have you sworn in before our next meeting.
Okay.
Just a couple of housekeeping matters. Wanted to thank Nancy. She sent out an updated committee roster this afternoon, so hopefully everyone received that. Thank you so much, Nancy. Wanted to, at the outset, thank our subcommittees, the External Outreach Committee and the Program Committee. They've been busy at work. This past Saturday, they met for a combined three hours getting work done. So I really wanted to thank the chairs and the committee members, Leah, who's chairing the program, Subcommittee and Maxine, who was chairing the External Outreach piece. And as you saw in their detailed minutes, there's a lot of work taking place. I have asked Elizabeth to share with the full committee the Zoom notices that go out for the subcommittee meetings. To the extent that folks want to participate or listen in to see what is taking place. Those committee meetings usually occur on the Saturday before our full committee meeting. And then, as another matter, if there are any items that people would like to see on the agenda for the next meeting, please feel free to comment under the committee comment section at the end of the meeting. We want to welcome everyone's feedback and input. And I am really excited about where we're going. We're finishing up two thousand and twenty, but I think the next quarter, first quarter of two thousand and twenty-one will be very busy. You all know that we're looking and working on site selections, community outreach, program designs. There will be council and commission meetings as well as the construction manager Subcommittee will kick off its work in the, I think it's the latter second half of January. Am I correct, Mark? January nineteen or something?
Nineteen.
Okay, good. I got that right. Great. Okay, with respect to old business, is there a motion to approve the minute from December?
I'll move approval, Greg.
Thank you, Bob. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? All of Mark, yes.
There was just one little typo midway down the first page on Vangella's name had an extra L in there.
I apologize, Vangella. I'll fix that.
That's all I had.
Okay, anyone else? Any comments? Corrections, revisions? Okay, great. Please, all in favor, please signify by saying aye, raising your hand.
Aye.
Great. I'm excited. We have a full committee tonight. Wow, look at that. The screen is popping. Love it. Okay, next, we're going to go into new business and I have taken the liberty of changing the format of the reporting of the new business. And going to start with the director's report and I'm going to ask folks to the extent that you have questions or comments that you wait till the end of the presentation from the presenter and then ask your question or comments. But I want to turn it over to Elizabeth for the director's report.
Thanks, Greg. On January sixth, we have a meeting with the Board of Ed. And at the top of the agenda, we'll be figuring out a plan to make sure that surveys are sent out to families and students so that we can make sure to incorporate as many people related to the Board of Ed as possible. Yesterday, we submitted final documentation and a report to the Connecticut State Library and the Governor's Office regarding the Everybody's Learned Grant that we received and everything is accounted for. And we're looking forward to expanding services with the fruits of that grant. That's it for me.
Any questions, comments for Elizabeth in her report?
I do. Thank you. Hi, Elizabeth.
Hi, Budanzi.
Um, how much is that grant and what type of programming do you intend on providing with it?
That grant was for forty-two thousand dollars and it was CARES Act money from the federal government. And it was specifically to help us with services during the COVID-nineteen pandemic.
Any other questions or concerns? Comments for Elizabeth? Okay, here we go. Thank you so much, Elizabeth. We're going to go into our committee reports and I'm going to ask Leah to give a report, a report on the Program Subcommittee.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Leah.
So we met this past Saturday, just to update you on some of the action items from a previous meeting. Elizabeth and the library staff are reviewing some of the resources that are available to brainstorm elements of their library program since they know better than any of us what they need. Greg is still waiting on a consulting proposal from the Burgers. Hi, guys. About helping with the program planning. And then, so on Saturday, we discussed and we created together a shared Google document so we can begin brainstorming elements of the library program. Like I said last time, it's organized by things that are critical, things that are preferred and things that, you know, would be nice. And for our next meeting, everyone on the committee will review the planning resources that I shared with them. They're also linked in the, in my report, so if you want to check those out. And everyone's going to contribute two or three items to the shared document and then we'll go over them next time. Um, and then we discussed the need for BPL to have an institutional vision or mission statement as part of the planning process, and that is something that we, as the library board, will be working on soon. And then, as far as action items, like I said, the, we're all reviewing the resources that we found and coming up with some ideas for the, for the program plan. And everyone's looking at what, you know, what's recommended by the state as far as program planning and considering areas that they would like to focus on based on their expertise or interest. And like I said, the board's going to be meeting soon to talk about a mission or vision statement. And that's all for me.
Any questions or comments for Leah in the Program Subcommittee?
I do have a question. Thank you. With regards to the library consultants, I know at our previous meeting, we had discussions with regards to a person by the name of Maxine. Forgive me because I did not write down her last name, but is she? I'm sorry, what is it?
It's Bleiweiß.
Can you spell that for me?
It's B-L-E-I-W-E-I-W-E-I-S, I believe.
Okay.
I can send it to you later.
Thank you. Is she still being considered for that? Because I know we had extended conversation that she would be more suitable for that role and that the Burgers would be more, well, were, that was part of the discussion for them to be the survey consultant. So I wanted to know, is Maxine B. still under consideration? Has she been, I mean, have you guys reached out to her?
At the Subcommittee level, no, we've only discussed engaging the Burgers. Thanks. Anybody else have a question?
Great.
Mark?
Mark?
Leah, um, do you know where you sit overall in terms of the schedule? You know, what's your goal for wrapping up this, this program? I know we're going to be hearing from Richard, you know, in the overall. And maybe we want to defer that discussion until we see the schedule, but, but we're going to need some kind of deadline, you know, to, to wrap up the, the program.
No, that's totally fair, but I, I think that that's something, yeah, if we want to discuss as a group and with the architects, we're happy to stick to a schedule. We just don't have one yet, but.
Yeah, and, and Mark, that will come up in Richard's, you know, the architect's presentation and we have to sort of master too because I, I think that we may have to find ourselves extending it slightly to get everything done that we will need to meet the, at least the timeline currently slated in the document.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Maxine to report out on the external Subcommittee work.
Okay. Hi, everyone. So we also met last Saturday as the External Outreach Committee. We met with the consultants, Alan and Leslie Berger, for the second time. The focus of this meeting was really to streamline the survey and really have a nice draft to share with you today. So we reviewed it, we discussed it at length, and we modified each of the survey questions. I believe the link was of the draft survey was shared with the building committee, so I'm hopeful that you had an opportunity to take the survey just to get a feel for it or have it had at least an opportunity to go through the questions. I think your feedback during the presentation will be helpful for us. As a Subcommittee, we have decided to meet the Saturday before our Wednesday meeting. So our next meeting is coming up on January ninth. And during that meeting, the goal is to finalize the survey. The survey will then be shared with the Library Building Committee during our January thirteenth, thirteenth meeting for your approval prior to launching the survey. The expected launch date is Friday, January twenty-second. So we're really trying to stay in line with what the architects have shared with us as a timeline. Also, as you can see from the minutes, we have planned a broad distribution of the survey. We have multiple town databases in mind. We have the Bloomfield Friends, the Bloomfield Messenger, Social Media Blast, Hard Copy of the Mailer, Billboards, et cetera. And as we move forward, we also hope to plan additional ways to engage the community. We have various incentives to appeal to different residents, so we are really trying hard to expand the reach of the survey. If there aren't any other questions or if you have any questions, let me know. And I think that when the Burgers go through their review of the survey, whatever feedback or questions you might have is going to be valuable to us, so please ask questions and provide feedback. That's it for me.
Lois?
I have a general question. Consistent with the work of the Program Committee, I've been reading the grant guidance and I'm assuming that Bloomfield is anticipating to apply for the million-dollar grant that's possible for construction of a library. Is that correct? Are we planning to apply for that?
I can comment on that, Greg. It's, it's been shown on the schedule since early on of, of doing just that and when we need to do that.
Then I would like to suggest that at, at least the committee chairs, Subcommittee chairs, read the grant guidance because I did that today and there's a lot of detail in there about things that we're going to need to prepare in order to submit an application for the grant. And as we do all of this work of outreach and program planning, we really need to make sure that we are touching the points that the grant guidance requests. So I, I would just say, I would encourage at least the Subcommittee chairs to read that guidance.
Thank you, Lois.
Thank you. I think that's fair, so I appreciate that, Lois. Thank you.
Maxine, can you expand a little bit of, I'm sorry, Chris?
That's okay, Greg.
On how we plan to reach out to students and what the thoughts are at this point in time?
Sure. Our hope is that we can forge, the library can forge a relationship with the Bloomfield Public Schools. I believe Elizabeth has a meeting with Central Office on January sixth. During that time, the discussion is going to center around what are some ways that we can reach out to the students of Bloomfield, whether it's in connection with a school-related event or a school-related initiative, just trying to build a relationship so that we can send the surveys out through, through that means.
Thank you. Great. Chris?
Um, Maxine, and I might have missed it. What is the length of time that the survey will be out for completion?
Well, one, we're trying to launch on January twenty-second. However, in speaking with the Burgers, we may have to launch more than once, so we might, and that will be dependent on what the response rates look like. So we're hoping that we can have the results, tabulate the results early February, but that all depends on the response rate.
So about a month? Is that what you're looking towards, a month?
Yes. I, I don't think it will take that long because it's going to be a January twenty-second first launch. If we have to relaunch somewhere around the twenty-ninth and then we'll start to tabulate the responses.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think the Burgers can better elaborate on that as well when they give their presentation.
Thank you.
Bob?
But thank you, Greg. Maxine, is there a way to make sure that people don't complete the survey more than once?
Well, we've had that discussion, and so we're still working on ways to prevent overlapping. We're also working on ways to prevent, for example, sending out a mailer and their multiple individuals in a household. So that's still on our radar for discussion and finding a solution for that.
Any other questions for the External Subcommittee? Okay, not hearing any. I'm going to turn it over to Alan and Leslie Berger, who are consultants and assisting us with the external piece and the surveys. And they are going to spend some time with us going through the survey and eliciting feedback from the committee through the survey. So at this time, I think we're going to share a screen and get the survey up, but I'll turn it over to Alan and Leslie.
Great, thanks. Hi, everybody.
Hi, everybody.
So before we get started, I just wanted to share with you what one of my grandchildren told me today. He's five years old. He's in kindergarten. The question was to me, why did the pencil cross the road? Anybody know the answer? No? It's to get to Pennsylvania. He loved it. He thought it was great. So I thought it was pretty funny, too. Anyways, so we're not going to go to Pennsylvania. We're going to stay in Connecticut. And let's talk about, oh, so I think everyone received the link to the survey and I saw a few people, I know Mark and a few others filled it out. How many people filled out the survey? One, two, three, four, five of you. Okay. All right, good. So many of you did. That's good. Whoever hasn't, make sure you do that either tonight or tomorrow so you get a feel for it. So let's talk about it a little bit. Let's bring it up. Everybody ready?
Right.
So this is just a black and white version, a PDF version. So the logo is in blue. But this again is a black and white version. So. Let's talk a little bit about the purpose or the objective of the survey. Everybody hear us? Okay? So there's, there's a few objectives. And based on the mayor's charge, so the mayor, we reread the mayor's charge to the whole committee and wanted to make sure that everything fit into that mission that she, that she talked about. So the, the, the objectives of the, of the survey have to do with engaging people, engaging people in Bloomfield about thinking about the library and thinking about what they like and dislike. What are their satisfactions? What are their dissatisfactions? Engaging people, residents, and this is critical too, to think about change because it's very difficult thinking about change and making change and think about the future. And given the environment that we're in today, those are important concepts as well. Also, the objectives are to inform both the stakeholders and the planners in understanding people's needs and interests and then in anticipating those needs and interests. Because what the library and where the library is going to be will depend very much on what we understand people's interests and needs to be. And to inform the stakeholders and planners as well so that eventually that referendum, so that a successful referendum can be launched where it's clear, where it's understandable and people know what it is that's expected of them. So these are pretty high expectations. They're pretty critical expectations. And, and I think these are things I will run through your whole campaign. And when you look at a campaign like this for a new library, it's in some ways similar to a political campaign. There are stages, there are steps, and you don't want to get too far ahead of yourself. You want to make sure you introduce certain topics and certain themes to people.
And, and build interest for what you're trying to do.
And engage people.
Right.
So the library currently has thirty-one percent of the population as cardholders. So that doesn't mean, some families may use one card for everybody in the family. But thirty-one percent, considering that's thirty-one percent, we want to make sure that the survey also helps to expand the circle of support around the library and around the concept of a state-of-the-art or a modern library, which is part of what Elizabeth and, and the board are doing with Constant Contact and their new newsletter. So.
Excuse me, do you mean thirty-one percent of the approximately twenty thousand people who live in Bloomfield? Or thirty-one percent of households?
No, people, individuals.
Okay, so. Set, so we, we understand from the survey software that it will take seven minutes to complete this survey, which is good. We don't want it much longer than that. We don't want it, maybe a little shorter would be okay, but much longer than that, we're going to lose people. So it also anticipates a completion rate of sixty percent. We're used to getting much higher than sixty percent because of the way we ask questions and the way we allow people to go through the survey. Plus, we also insist on incentive, so that keeps people engaged to, to the end as well. We'd like to get at least a ninety to a ninety-five percent completion rate. Here's what that means. Once people start to survey, especially online, we want them to finish it. So we want to keep that in mind throughout. All right. You see the intro, introduction there? I think that's something we'll probably talk about when we get to the end and we go back over that and, and hear what you think it could be, how it can be improved and, and maybe what's missing. Think about that too, as we go along, what might be missing and how we can improve. First question, do you have a Bloomfield Public Library card? Again, that goes back to the thirty-one percent, and it's a very easy question. So I'm the participant. I'm taking the survey and I don't see anything threatening or boring or limiting in that it just eases me into the whole survey. Plus, it'll be useful to the, for the library to look at what people's responses are to that as well. Second question about what do you like elsewhere is, is primarily for?
Right. So one of the things we want to find out is, and, and you'll see there are several ways where we're asking people to respond to what you like, what you don't like, what's missing, what do you want to see? So the idea of asking them what other area libraries they visit gives us some indication where they're going and the why part of that question is important, right? So if they tell us they go to Windsor because, I'm making things up now, but because it has better hours or they go to West Hartford because they can shop when they go to the library in West Hartford, whatever it may be, those, the answer to that why question is very important as you think about how you plan both the location of your new library and the kind of space you need to accommodate.
Okay. Yes. Okay, to move on. So question number three is, and, and we've been using this for a while and we find it to be extremely helpful. Pew Research also uses a similar question in, in a lot of their surveys around education and other things. And, and here's the point. The point here is, what is the gap between, I think my town should have a really good library, but I don't need it. I have my own books. I have my own library in my house. I don't go anywhere. I stay home. So what is the gap between my engagement with the library and how I feel the library is important to my town? And then what we do is think about that gap and think about how the library and as well as planning for a new library would need to address that.
How do you close it? How do you make them align with each other, right?
Right. So in a sense then, how do we go from thirty-one percent to eighty percent of, of cardholders? So that has to do with that question a lot as well. And number four is, again, it's an easy engagement question. Okay, I'm the taker. Oh, thanks for asking me about what I do at the library because I'm more than happy to tell you. So this took a lot of work with the Subcommittee, right? And we grouped a lot of activities that people do in the library into categories. So that way it was fast. People don't get hung up on it and they can get through this issue relatively quickly. But again, it's an engagement piece to keep people's interest and to find out that there's not a lot of benefit, I think, for the library, but there is benefit to keep a person engaged and to find out what they want to tell us. If you notice this forced choice answers and there's open-ended answers, here's what we find, that the wealth in the open-ended answers are going to keep you engaged with those answers for the next year. You're going to be mining things out of those open-ended questions for a long time to come. So those are going to be very valuable in a different way that the forced choice answers are. So here we get to five and six. So I'm the participant and now I'm saying to myself, well, this is what I want to tell you. I want to tell you what I like. I want to tell you what I don't like. I want to tell you what I think you should be doing because you're asking me for my opinion. So I think this is where people are happy to get to this point. They're being asked for their opinion. They're going to tell us what they like about the library. We went back and forth on some of the wording here. We may have some other suggestions as well. And also what can be improved.
And it's a required answer.
Well, five and six is required.
Right.
We made five and six required. We can make anyone required or make none required. I think that's, you ought to think about that as well. But I think five and six is important. So you're not going to get out of this survey to make, to put your name in for drawing unless you tell us at least these two important questions we have for you. So we want your opinions in some way. What should be improved at both locations?
Three locations.
Oh, I'm sorry. And what should be improved? Right. And that's important too for people to tell us what they think should be made better. Number eight is a.
So eight is not a comprehensive list. I suspect your Program Committee has many, many more items on their list of things to consider for a new library. But it's, it's fairly representative of the kinds of things that communities are thinking about as they rebuild, renovate or, or build new libraries. So it gives them, it, it gets them thinking about what some of the possibilities are.
We call these aspirational crumbs.
Right. And then there's another category again so that they can tell us specifically what they want.
And whatever's maybe missing. So usually people are very happy and chatty in five, six, seven, eight. Nine is completely open-ended comment. Oh, I just want to go back a little bit. So in number eight, so you see the question, what would you like to see in a new or updated library? So that is the only place so far where we say anything about a new library. So I think we need you to think about that, whether it's late, whether it's at the right place. Should it be in the intro that we talk about a new library? We need you to think about that and give us some direction.
Excuse me.
And also number, so number nine. Number nine again is, is open-ended comments where people, we, let's assume we get. We, let's assume we get a thousand responses, which would be fantastic. More than likely, just in number nine, you'll have at least eight hundred comments. From people, which will be great. Number ten is also aspirational. And talks about people's expectations in terms of. What are the things they'd like to see in the library? It's a bit redundant, but that's okay.
You should fix that. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. It's, I'll tell you why it does that.
Okay.
And so it's aspirational and to give people an opportunity again to think about what role do I want this library to play? It's the same role my library played when I was young, when I was little. So the needs for after school homework out for college prep. For all those types of things are a little bit different than they used to be in the past. So we want to give people an opportunity to think about that. And again, if there's anything missing, critically missing from there, let us know. Number nine, I was thinking maybe you should go after ten. So that's something you could give us a little guidance on as well. Meaning the last question could be what other thoughts or comments would you like to share with us? So ten becomes nine, nine becomes ten. Number fifteen, we ask for age. Why do we ask for age? Because it's not that really critically important. We look at the survey as it's being filled out every day. Let's assume on day five, we have two responses from the Otis zero to seventeen year old group. So we're going to say to the subcommittee, we have a problem. You have to call the schools and you need to speak to a principal or whatever it is you're doing to guarantee team participation. It's not happening. So we'll alert you to what else you may need to do. Or maybe we need to, as Maxine was mentioning, relaunch it just for the high schools in some way. And the same with the older cohort. If we're shy on the older cohort, we need to think of where else. We need to make sure people are filling this out. Last question, participate in the drawing. We, and to receive the library's new email newsletter, write your email address here. That's the survey. Takes seven minutes. To respond to someone's question before.
Excuse me.
About filling it out more than once. We want households to fill that out more than once because usually there are three or four people in a household. And that's okay. We have never, ever, ever found that. It gets abused.
I was going to say.
Except once, when it was abused by the director.
Yes, all right. We were able to find out that.
And the reason we can tell that is because we see the IP address. We see the addresses, the computer IP addresses. No one else sees that, but we can.
And then there will be a print version of this as well. So that people who don't feel comfortable taking it online can fill it out. On paper. So that's questions for us, comments?
Sadly, let's leave it up, yeah?
Lois.
She's muted.
I have several questions.
Go ahead.
Also, I have a different version of the survey than you just showed us. I must have had an earlier version.
Yeah.
Is there any question or is it useful to ask how often they use the library?
So we have asked that in the past. I would be reluctant now because we have seven minutes already. In the survey, it's a nice to know, it's not necessarily a need to know. But if the library would like to do it, I think it wouldn't take that much more time. We could always add it in. Unless there are other additions we need to make. But I'd be careful of going too far over seven minutes. That's an easy check off.
Yeah, we'd give them a grouping, you know, once a week, once a month, whatever. So yes, it can be included, but let's see what other changes we might want to make first before we make a decision. I haven't, yeah.
Whether it helps, I don't, I don't even know if it helps, but. The other question was under number eight. You asked what people would like to see in a new library. The next questions after that I don't have in my survey. But under number eight, it's mostly physical amenities.
Right, not services, right.
I beg your pardon?
Right, it's not services, it's mostly.
It's spaces.
Yeah.
One of the things that I'd be interested to know is what about collections and themes? Are people getting the right information at the library? Whatever the spaces are.
So we might think about a checkbox there which could say without. Influencing the response, something about. More bestsellers or more, more. Up to date collection or, you know, you'd figure out what the right question is.
They're going to tell us that in five and six.
Yeah, they probably will. I think it would be difficult to ask for much more beyond that. You know, more books, more films, more, more digital resources. Because people aren't going to be thinking specifically about types of genres or subject.
Some people will not tell us.
Yeah, but I think there's enough open.
You don't have enough large print books.
Right.
You don't have enough bestsellers. That would be five and six.
Yeah, six, they might say, I want more books or, yeah.
More in terms of, is there enough current events? Is there enough history? That, that kind of thing, but maybe you can't do that in a survey like this.
Well, we, Lois, that comes out usually in those what you like and what you don't like and what you want to improve questions. People aren't shy. People aren't shy. They tell us that. But if we can sneak in a couple of collection questions in there, let's, let's see.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could do a couple of check offs.
But the focus was on, the focus was on space.
Yeah.
Before we move on, I know Bob had his hand up and I want to go down the line, but I. Ask you guys two quick questions. The survey doesn't ask about location. Site locations, and can you speak to that? And then secondly, can you opine on what is an ideal timeframe for which someone should complete a survey? What do the studies or statistics show as far as getting someone to, you know, do a survey and complete it? Is it five minutes?
Oh.
Six, six minutes is perfect. You know, when people usually make videos. Look, how long is a commercial? Right, and usually when people make PSA type videos, it's six minutes. But six to seven, seven's pushing it a little bit. We want to be careful not to go too far above that.
Right, and we don't want to be repetitive if we can help it, right? So that's why the open ended questions are nice because it enables the survey. Participant to take as much time as they want. So if they want to spend, if they want to really be thoughtful about this and write a lot of. Suggestions, they have that opportunity, but we're not forcing that by adding more and more questions to the survey.
So I think the.
I was going to respond to the why no location.
Go ahead.
So.
The survey keeps sliding up and down.
I'm sorry.
We're moving it, sorry. So the, the issue about why no location, I think this is our first. Real community or your first real community engagement opportunity. And that asking that question during that first engagement is premature. Because it has, it doesn't have enough context for people to be even thinking about it, right? So for your purposes, and I think this is where this survey can be really helpful to the programming committee. Is you're going to get a lot of information from people about what they think is great about the library. As well as what they think may be missing or could be improved. And those are decisions that will drive how you think about space. And, and depending on what amount of space you come up with, where that space needs to be. I think if we were to ask them right now, should the library be at A, B, or C? They may not even be aware that you're thinking about that and they'd say, what are they talking about? And they have no basis. To really make a decision about A, B, or C as a location.
And, and the architects.
And that's part of what we're asking TKSP to do, right? Is to evaluate the pros and cons of various sites. So it just felt to us that it was premature to put that in a survey at this point. I think as you continue with your community engagement opportunities. That at some point, you're probably going to want to have an online or maybe by then an in-person community. Forum or several. And those are great places to have conversations about that. Because you may even have some preliminary plans to share with the community. But it just didn't feel right at this moment in time to say, do you want it here or would you prefer it there?
Well, and when you have, so the mayor in her charge also said that she would like some community forums. About what people's thoughts were. So that after you have the survey and after the architects have vetted the various possibilities. You're going to have a lot to talk to people about. And you're going to have some, some real data and you're going to have some real facts and you'll have some. I think at that point to a vision of what people are expecting from a new library. And then you can have a much richer conversation, not just about a location. But about. What the role of that library is going to be in the community.
Right, it's connected to your vision and being able to put it all together with, thank you for telling us every fault.
Yeah, we heard you.
We heard you. We've been thinking about it based on what you're telling us. And you may find, you know, you may have no surprises based on the responses. Or you may have a lot of surprises that cause you to think differently. About what the size of the library should be.
I think so.
And where it should be. So, so I think this is in my mind for, for all of you. And having gone through this myself, I think it's an iterative, iterative process. And the first thing we want to do is get people comfortable even thinking about the library. Now, we've mentioned that thirty one percent registration rate several times now. We need to get that up. We need to get more people engaged with the library. So whatever we can.
New newsletters.
And the e-note litter is going to be a terrific way to do that. And many of the other changes that you're planning are going to be great ways to. Demonstrate that the library is really engaging with the community. So that's sort of a long winded answer to your question, but that's, that's the rationale.
Great, thanks. Berman with his hand up.
And also there's someone who built a new library after the previous.
Well, thirty years. It took them thirty years to have a conversation about where the library should be.
Okay, Bob Berman?
No, thank you. I have a couple of comments on it. Question number two, I think you're missing an item there and I think it's none.
Um, okay.
What did he say?
None.
None, and then take the box away from, please tell us why, because I think it's misleading having a box there.
Yeah, that's a good one, or I don't use any other libraries, okay.
Okay, and then over to number. Four, what are the ways you use the library? I think you want to add doing homework.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I do know the kids come there, come to either branch to do homework.
Right.
I've seen it.
Okay, that's a good.
Probably add that to work on a personal or group project. If you don't want to add another.
You know, I don't think it's a bad idea to ask the homework question specifically because that's a very intentional use.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, and the other was number seven, what should be improved at each location? I think you want to take that out. And the reason I say that is, you were talking about, you're not trying to talk about a particular location or where it should be. And it's implied that that's where it's going to be. I'm not sure that question germinated in this part of the survey. They're just already asking about where they want to see.
Yeah.
Resumes a location, two locations to look at. And the way in the structure of the locations, I think, I really think you want to take that one out. That's my suggestion there.
Yeah.
I've thought about that.
We'll probably pick it up in the previous. Yeah, it's redundant.
But it's specific.
Yeah.
Not specific.
Yeah, so the, I guess the thing to think about is whether there are specific things related to those three locations. That we want them to comment on, because they may not have hit it in five or six.
Well, I can see you leaving the library online. As part of it. But I really think you want to take away Prosser McMahon. Because that's kind of forcing, thinking about, it's going to be one of two locations.
Okay.
That's my thing on that.
That's what should be improved, is that what you're saying?
No, just like this.
I'm trying to remember what eight was. Because again, I have a different version too, because I have what we sent out yesterday. Okay, eight's still the same. Yeah, I think, I think I agree with you. I think you want nine after ten. I think that makes a lot.
Yeah. Yeah.
Ten through fifteen.
Losing the box.
At the end there, I think it makes a lot more sense. I agree with you.
Yep.
And I. I think the way that. Yeah, okay, what you did was take the old nine, what we had, yeah, came through yesterday and break it into four different, five different pieces.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah, we re-matted it.
Yeah, you redid that piece.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's my comments on it. Otherwise, I think it's an excellent draft.
Thanks.
Nancy, I can't see who has their hands up, so.
A lot of work on it.
Budunzi had her hand up.
Thank you. Budunzi?
Thank you. Would it be possible if you can send everyone this revised copy that you have here?
It's the same link.
I'm sorry?
It's the same link that you got yesterday or two days ago.
Okay, so that is the link and not actually the PDF version that we got. So the survey that I filled out is actually the, the survey that I'm looking at.
I didn't know what you received. So what did you receive? You received a PDF?
Yes, we received, this is, this is where the difference is.
Elizabeth?
I think, no, I'm pretty sure that the link was the old version, I think. Because I thought I printed it and I was the one that copied it, made into a PDF.
We'll send the link.
This is the old.
We'll send the link out to everybody.
Yeah, if you guys, if somebody sends us the group email, we'll send it out to everybody.
Okay, thank you.
You can just send it to me and I'll make sure everybody gets it.
Okay, okay, great.
The correct link was in the agenda, so the link that Nancy sent out is still the same link. And if you click on it now, you'll see the changes, the live changes.
Okay, and I should be able to print that link, correct?
Yes.
Okay, then, thank you. I also, I agree with a statement that Lois made earlier. With regards to adding a question there that states how frequently you go to the library.
Okay, we can do that.
Because I think that that'll be helpful to, to see if there's an increase and if there's a decrease. But I think that that would be helpful to know. I also think that the questions with regards to what you like most. At the different locations would also be helpful as well. Because I think that could help the committee determine what, I mean, it kind of ties into your questions in number four. But I also think that, you know, when they give specifics about what they like most and what they dislike or like the least. That could help that subcommittee in terms of the programming.
So what you're saying is, on five and six, we should say, what do you like most about the Bloomfield Public Library?
Well, I like the way you have it. I mean, I think it should stay in terms of five, six, and seven. I think four, five, six, and seven are all interrelated and I think that they would provide valuable information.
Right, so for example, somebody could respond on question seven, Prosser location, what should be improved? Would potentially not have mentioned that in five or six, but in the box there, they could say, I hate that location, right?
Yes.
Or.
Or that location isn't convenient, but I mean, really, I think it wouldn't be. I think their response would most likely be with the aesthetics or accessibility regarding going to the different areas in the library. Which could sometimes be difficult.
Yeah, so it is a little redundant if somebody hasn't been thought about it on their own in five or six. But I think there's some value to leaving it.
I agree.
I do too.
Um, I think it's.
Who's that? I'm sorry, I can't see.
Hi, Alan.
Hi, Alan. Nancy, it's Chris. Back to number four, I too think the survey is well done. But in number four, what I don't see that I think you, we need to insert is the the whole, um. Need for research resources such as free database. Because if you have students that are going to use the library, you've got the high school, you've got teachers. You've got a university close by that might use that library. I think you need to have research resources. So what are the ways that you use the library? And I see, uh, you know, the more basic in, um, needs, but I think we need to add. Are people using the library for research purposes?
So if we said something like, um, research and digital, digital.
Databases, yes, yep, yep. You know, the adult person, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't know if you're finished, ma'am.
I, I, I. But I wasn't finished when Chris jumped in. But that's okay, go ahead. That's okay.
Budunzi, we'll circle back to you.
Okay, then, thank you.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yes, um, excuse my ignorance, um, I know I'm new to the committee. Uh, what is the purpose of the survey? Because when I took the survey, it it came off not as a programming. That the staff would be sending out to the community. Uh, what's, what relations does this have with the building committee? I guess maybe that that's been said and I just didn't understand. You did touch on that a little bit, um, Mr. and Ms. Berger. But what does this survey have to do with the building committee? Because it it came out very much as programming.
Okay, so it has everything to do with the building committee.
Okay.
So the information you're going to get from this survey. Is going to help inform your thinking about what you want to do with regard to a new or renovated library. And even location, because I suspect some people will say to us, parking is an issue, that's why I never go there, or the traffic's bad or whatever, right? So again, we're not asking specific questions like, should we build a new library and where should it be? What we're trying to get at here is how are people using the facilities now? And where do they see that there are some potential deficits that, um. That are are things that are important to them to to be addressed. And then you, as the building committee. Will use that information and also the architects will use that information. As you plan for. Location, if that turns out to be a big issue, right? Um, or as you think about, well, what's the scope of the building program that the build.
So, yeah, we're completing program in two different ways. So when we, when we're talking about programming, we're talking about building programming, not programming for people to.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, sorry.
But that's the confusion that happens all the time.
So this survey will be coming from the library, building committee, or from the library staff?
No, from you, uh, well, I think it's.
From the library.
From the library.
So we talk and the town. So it's a town and the library.
Thank you. You you explained it.
Okay, thanks, I'm sorry.
You're welcome. Yeah, so for people who aren't like, you know, who aren't connected to the library, it gets confusing when we use the term programming in that way. Because, and and what architects talk about programming, they're talking about square footage and they're talking about.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Right.
Ava?
Yeah, thanks. Um, that's good, because I wanted to talk about programming. I do have another couple of things to mention. Um, if you are having a question about use and frequency. If you say, how often do you go to the library? That's a very different question than how often do you use the library? I use the library all the time. I very seldom actually go there now because of the pandemic.
Right.
But I use, um, the online resources frequently, so. Maybe just, I'm I'm just saying, um, as a cautionary note, the question should make it clear to people you're finding out. All of their use pattern, not whether they just show up and park the car.
Right, so in question one, we do ask the question, I give a choice, I only use the library online.
Right.
If we ask the frequency question, um, then we can, we can also deal with that and in a, in a way that tells us. I never go there physically, but I I use it all the time.
In Tromble, Connecticut, a few years ago, we had a public meeting of about a hundred people who were there to talk about a new library. And one fella stood up and said, I never come in, I never use the library. And he's, and then we, you know, as people were talking to him, he said, well, I come to hear a lecture, but I don't use the library. Right, so we know you can use the library in many different ways, and everyone doesn't quite understand that all the time, right?
Adam, Mayor, I know you had a question.
I have one more thing I wanted to mention.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, um, when Christine was talking about research materials. That also hooks in to the online library possibilities or using tech within the library. Library is is hooked to, um. A huge portal of databases because they access Research CT. The state's virtual library.
Right.
So there, that may be hard to get at. Um, that has hundreds of databases that adults, big kids, little kids, casual users, anyone could be using. So I I just wanted to throw that in, that maybe it's not resources that are physically housed in the library at all times.
Right.
Those resources are most certainly available.
Right, so we could, I'm just thinking out loud now, we could say physical research resources or, um, digital. So resources through Research CT or something like that, right?
Sure, thanks.
All right, and I see that we're going to go to the mayor, Budunzi, and something, a couple of other hands raised. But I want to make sure that we get the mayor in there and Budunzi, and I think it was Stephanie Calhoun that I saw.
Thank you very much.
Mark, too, please. Thanks.
Sorry, Mark, I can't see.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Um, I did, I, if you saw a, a, um, a survey that's a little crazy, that was mine. I was trying to see if I could force through the survey, which I did. Um, so the questions that you had to. Answer, I think they were five and six. I I think I put like ABC in both of them, so I was able to move on. Um, but I also had the older version of the survey. So in order to, in in order to finish the survey, I forced to finish it without really answering the questions.
That happened.
Um, I'm thinking if if, i- if I did that just so that I can put my name in the drawing. There should probably be a caveat that the survey had to be completely filled out or something like that. Not sure if that's what you want to do. But I technically did finish the survey, so I should be able to enter into the drawing.
Right.
Number one. Number two, um, I do agree that we should probably ask the frequency question. But I don't, I also think that we should ask which branch that they go to, right? Because I think that would be extremely important to find out which branch they go to. And then it brings us back to, I think it was, was it the last question about what could be improved? Because if you get most of the people who use the McMahon library, you're going to get information for the McMahon library, which isn't going to be really. It's not going to give us all the information that we're going to need looking to do a new Prosser library. Um, if you find out which branch they most frequent, then you will help, it will help us when we're looking at. Possibly where we should invest the money for a new library. So I think those might be, um, some important things for us to think about while we're doing the survey. I can tell you that even though I forced a question, um, five and six, the survey was pretty easy to, um, go through. Didn't take much time at all. I I do hope that people answer the open-ended questions because that's where we're going to get most of our information. I don't know how, um, we secure that. Um, the checkboxes are just that, checkboxes. But I think, uh, the open-ended questions are going to be of of most importance. I don't know if we can make those mandatory, um, as well to get through the survey, um. Those are just my two thoughts. Thank you very much.
So, Mayor, so you'd like to see some other required. Uh, questions, is that what you're saying? Like, maybe?
Well, I, it's, and and, you know, it's, it's just, it's going to be up to the committee, but I think those open-ended questions. I think that's where we're going to get the the most meat, right? I I don't think that we should overburden someone to do the survey, but I do believe that we should. Make it as thoughtful as possible.
Right.
Um, so that's going to be between, you know, the subcommittee and the committee to decide. But which library you go to, which one you frequent, you know. Wha- what can be improved upon, what do you like? Um, why do you go to one library over another library? I think those questions will help us to craft what we're going to do.
Okay.
Really, you know. Thank you.
All right.
Kim.
Mark.
Uh, the mention of new or updated facilities.
Right.
I, I think it should be added in the very opening statement somehow.
Yeah, me too.
I mean, that's what's prompting this entire thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, uh, maybe you can draw something from the mayor's charge or the committee in there, so it's.
Okay.
You know, crafted properly, but I think if it's stated in the opening.
Well, I think I would put it, Mark, I think I would, so that last sentence in the intro, your thoughts are important to us as we consider. As we consider the needs of Bloomfield residents and make plans for new or modernized libraries to better serve our community.
That's great. That's great. I I think that would go a long way to, for the mindset as well, as as you start to go through the questions.
Right, so right at the beginning, we're alerting them that change is big, not small, and we're talking about a big change. Great, thank you.
Good.
All right, we'll, we'll go to Budunzi and then Jesse.
Okay, um, actually, the mayor mentioned the question that I was going to suggest. And that is which library do they frequent? I think that that would be a good question to have on here. Because it also talks about utilization that can possibly drive whichever location we determine to choose.
Thank you, okay. All right, and Jesse?
Sure, I would just say for number two, could we add one more checkbox that says other? And then tell us why, because people may frequent other libraries other than the ones listed.
Yeah, we were going to do something else there too.
None.
Oh, none, so none and other and none, okay.
Great, and any more hands raised, Nancy? I apologize.
And in the, in the audience, we have Stephanie Calhoun that would like to speak, ask a question.
All right, after Stephanie, we'll, okay, Stephanie, please.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I, I guess my question is, uh. It would be relevant under option one, question one, but, um, I guess my question would be geared towards Elizabeth. Um, Elizabeth, do you feel it necessary or important for there be a question to be asked under option one for expiration of library card?
You know, that relates to something that I wanted to point out that during COVID nineteen times. It's a weird time to ask about frequency of visiting the libraries. Um, and related to your question, um, if your library cards expired. Um, because I do think that we may be experiencing people coming in to our physical locations less. But our online location way more, just to give you a, an example, last month, in November. Um, the total digital interactions in our online library was sixty-nine hundred. Um, that's a, that's a pretty high number. Um, so the way people think about how they visit the library, I'm not sure everybody totally understands that question. Um.
So maybe we need to have a general statement here that says, think about how you use the library prior to COVID.
We, we talked about having some COVID information, maybe we need to beat that up a little bit, but the committee can, you know, we can revisit that.
Yeah, I'll make a note of it. I mean, I understand what you're saying. They may be thinking about how they've used it in the last six months, which could be.
Ten months.
Could be very different than how they would normally do it, so, um. Yeah, so I think maybe we need a statement there.
All right, great. That is awesome. Uh, I don't see any more hands, I just wanted to.
There's, there are a few more hands, sorry. Um, we have. Stan Taskperson?
Nancy, I don't know that, okay.
Okay, and now, and then we'll, we're going to ask the people in the audience if the, you would hold your comments until the end of the meeting, so we can. Go on to other things, so go ahead, Stan.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, this is quick. There, the comments are totally directed at the survey. Number one. Survey distribution, I had suggested the school system be used. I'm glad to see that that's being considered. The point I was make, it would make is the benefit of the library is not just to those students K through twelve in Bloomfield. But lasts a lot longer in terms of their future. Number two. I haven't heard anything, maybe the committee has thought about issuing this in Spanish as well? I don't know, I leave that to the committee. Number three, with respect to the location preferences. This ought to be worked in here some way in a soft manner. Without being site-specific, like, uh, center of town, where the population is. Where it has always been, if you can do that, it's a very tough subject. You have to word around it. Uh, number three, there are no word or character limits indicated on responses. Like two hundred and fifty characters or the ability to add a comment, attach a comment. Uh, and the last item, absolutely. In the introduction, there has to be a sentence, like you've discussed.
Right.
Bloomfield is evaluating library renovations and or new construction. Please provide your input as follows, that's essential.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry.
Nancy, is there any more hands up from the committee?
Uh, yes, we have, um, Elizabeth and Richard.
Oh, okay. Elizabeth, go ahead, please.
Um, I'm also, you know, as we move forward on the library board and the library staff of, uh. You know, raising service expectations at both locations. I'm not sure about, you know, how frequently do you visit McMahon Wittenberry, for example? Like, we just, uh, finished up a major collection development project in terms of updating the collections. So I'm, I'm just not sure that that is an act, like, the representation of that question. Um, would reflect where Bloomfield Public Library currently is, um, in terms of McMahon Wittenberry Library. That's all.
Thank you.
Okay. The kinds of things we can discuss with the subcommittee.
Richard?
Yes, thank you, Greg. I I really appreciate the work that's gone into this survey, and it's prompted a lot of discussion, which I think has been great, uh, this evening. And, uh, I don't want to prolong the discussion, I know we have other things the committee needs to get to, but what comes to my mind. Uh, we started with question number seven, which I, uh, I think I know the answer to this because we had a chat about it, uh, Alan and Leslie. You don't identify main branch or main library and branch library, which is good, and I think you're doing that deliberately. But I I think this raises the question to the space programming committee. Uh, how are they viewing how they're approaching this? Uh, are they approaching this as one library? Um, are they preconceived notions about a main and branch libraries? That, that's the question, really. How, how is this, how do you view this being developed in the program? I'm very eager to see the space requirements, quite frankly.
Anyone want to respond to that?
All right, where are we here?
Ava?
Ava, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, we actually had, um, a conversation, in fact, I I'm the one who was part of the conversation. Trying to decide exactly what to call the libraries. The, the thought was to avoid suggesting that one. Library that we have is, um, somehow more important than the other. That we want to talk about a library system that has various components serving everyone in the community. How that configuration plays out is something that we don't know yet. And that's part of what this survey is designed. And that's part of what this survey is designed to measure, you know, how do people use the libraries? Where, where is use for which programs? It's more complicated than who walks in the door. Um, the libraries do, do have differences in um, programming and the requests from patrons. So, we, we very specifically had this conversation about which word to use. Should we use branch, should, you know, whatever? And location is, is a term that came up that seemed to be less weighted. And that, that was the idea.
You know, I was doing some research the other day, just looking at library photos, and after I was looking in other communities, I realized in New York City, where they have a very strong branch system and this big, huge library on Fifth Avenue and Forty Second Street, um, they have stopped calling the branches, branches, they call them the name of the library. So, for example, the Fifty-third Street Library, or the Ending Library, or the Morningside Library. So, they have, I don't know if it was conscious, conscient, conscious or inadvertent, but also moving away from that idea um, that it's a tiny little branch as opposed to a system of libraries.
Yeah, that's, that old paradigm of.
Great, that's great.
Not necessarily the paradigm of the future for library services.
And, and, and Richard, I, I, I think your comment and question was a, a great segue uh, to your report. And what I will say is that this has been a great session with feedback uh, from the committee and the public. Uh, what I realize, and members of the committee will say, one of the most difficult jobs was paring down the survey, what you see tonight, it was longer a couple days ago. And I think the charge for the subcommittee, who will take everything under advisement, is to, how do we recreate the survey such that it's uh, time sensitive? Because we can't add more time to this, because it's going to take people's uh, willingness to complete it, but we will uh, effort to uh, include a lot of the great suggestions that were made tonight. And it may require us to take other things out, but I don't think that we can increase it time-wise, that, that would uh, not do us well, so the the, the subcommittee will be hard at work trying to be responsive to the concerns and questions and comments raised. But everyone should know that is a very, very difficult task, paring it down as we, what you said, longer. Uh, but anyway, we will get back to you, and again, thank you all for the wonderful uh, feedback on this uh. Alan and Leslie, thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Alright, uh, I'm going to uh, turn it over to uh, Richard for a quick update on the project. And we'll just.
We can stay on.
Exit out of that uh, shared screen, please. Okay, thank you. And we're gonna hear from our architects.
Right, so if I could share my screen. Okay, can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, great, so uh, this look, should look very familiar to you, um, my report will be very brief. Uh, it is in response to some of the questions that were asked earlier this evening. How does the subcommittee work fit into the overall timeline that we get, we've given uh, this committee? Um, the first of which, I guess, is the survey. Um, so you can see here that in task item number seven, community outreach and survey, we were looking to have the survey started in uh, December, which it has, you've already been doing the prep work, the actual survey in January with results in February, so I think you're on track here. Um, and then another uh, comment had to do with I believe um, the mention of a construction manager, so you'll see that I inserted a subcommittee meeting to discuss the construction manager process that will happen in January. So um, we are on track, I don't see any issues as was discussed tonight. You'll see in this timeline that I've deleted task item number four, cause that's done. So that won't appear in future versions, task item number six is also done, so that will be deleted. We have one open item, and maybe a space planning consultant to be brought in. If that slips a little bit, that would be okay. We're hoping that we get a preliminary space plan in mid-January, uh, because we're anxious to start fitting in the sites that we have identified, the spaces that you are um, coming up with. So even if it's a preliminary list, doesn't have to be final, uh, some square footage just would be great for us to start with. Uh, the next page is just an enlargement of these forthcoming immediate milestones. First is that maybe space planning consultant could be brought on board, but I know you're uh, waiting for a proposal on that. So if that slips a little bit, that's okay. And the new item that we added here at the bottom, the subcommittee discussion on the CM process, that means construction manager process. Uh, I, I believe that's gonna start in January, and then as that's developed, we can fit that into the overall timeline. So we're on track, I don't see any issues.
Great, uh, any questions or comments for our architect, based on the presentation?
Um, just going back to uh, the, the uh, the space planning, I'm kinda nervous about your, your goal there of uh, January thirteenth, to have a uh, even a preliminary space plan. Can we discuss that with the, with the subcommittee, is that, does that seem doable?
Well, it depends, um, sorry, Richard, what, by preliminary space plan, what exactly are you looking for?
Well, um, for instance, one of the biggest impacts on the square footage is community rooms. Um, meeting rooms, if you can at least give us some initial notion of, are you talking about one large commu- community room? Um, several smaller rooms, divisible spaces, that would certainly help us in the planning of it.
Could you, um, could you provide us with like, a general list of the kinds of information that you're looking for, so that we can just get right to work on that?
Yeah, that would be, yes, I can certainly do that, I can give you a tally of spaces that you'll typically find in library projects that we've done. Understand that all it is, is something for you to react to, it's not my suggestion. You have a difficult task of trying to distill um, your vision into a listing of spaces, but um, let's, let's start the discussion, so I can provide you um, a sampling.
Great, thank you.
And, and Richard, we will leave it to the uh, subcommittee, but my thought is um, we may need to push that out uh, at least two weeks, uh, because I want to make sure that we're being thoughtful and intentional, uh, understanding that it's uh, preliminary.
Right.
Don't want to rush that process, so we may have to move that out and sort of work around uh, the milestones to accommodate that. And we can talk uh, later about that, but the subcommittee can um, at least get working on it. But I, again, I want to be thoughtful and, and not rush through that process.
Right, and, and the survey results will al- also have some uh, input into the program as well.
Right.
That should inform.
Yep, I, I agree, and so again, this is just a tool, this milestone chart. Um, things will move around, the, the big milestone, as you can see, here's town council approval in July. It seems like it's far away, but um, we, we, this is just a reminder of some critical milestones, so um, we can certainly move some things around. Uh, it has to be a very thoughtful, deliberate process, I agree, Mark, I appreciate your bringing that up.
Yeah, one more, one more thing, Greg.
Yes.
Um, and I know we're not specifically discussing it tonight, but um, the, the major decision of site, sites, just as this building committee is going through, you know, a long involved process, thoughtful process of, of site selection, if the town council is gonna be doing the same thing. Um, I don't think we're gonna be able to hand the town council a decision on that, and expect a, okay, a rubber stamp on it. I think they deserve the same kind of um, thoughtful process uh, in their way that we have. So, ju- just move for thought on how we deliver and when we deliver um, our site selection information to town council. It's not gonna, it's not gonna get dumped on in, in one lump, somewhere along the line, and I think it has to be developed as well.
Correct. Good point. Thank you.
Greg?
Yes, Lois?
Um, if we decide, for example, that we want to get to the silver lead specification, um, probably none of us on the program committee knows what that means in terms of square footage.
Always unmute yourself.
Sorry, I think none of us uh, probably has the experience.
You might want to set that as a goal for the project, and then I think um, the architects can build the in any additional square footage they need to in order to.
That was my question, can the architect do those, those?
Worry about it, if you say to them, we want to be silver, then they'll do exactly what they need to do to get there.
Thank you.
Alright, I'm gonna start thinking about it right away.
Okay.
Yes, this question is very hard. Um, considering your timeframe, where you are noting remaining sites to be discussed in, as of January thirteenth, when do you see that actual decision being made from the standpoint of the building committee? From a standpoint of, of recommendation?
So if you look here, present design options to committee, February through March, we will be presenting to you various options on the sites that we have identified. The earlier you identify those sites, the more we can flesh out these options for you. So we, we'd like to really get into it in February, uh, that's why we had targeted January as a target for identifying the remaining sites. If that slips a little bit, I think that's okay. Um, but if it's, goes past February, then it becomes difficult for us to deliver meaningful um, studies of some sites that we have not discussed yet. So uh, I'm hoping that by, let's say, beginning of February, we have firmed up any remaining sites, so that we could get on with our option studies.
Um, I just wanted to, to add a comment, which I'm sure you're already well aware of, that the McMahon-Wittenberry site will probably require infrastructure improvement and cost that the other two sites that are being considered will not. So, when you talk about um, additional planning and especially additional cost, um, considerations with regard to transportation to that site, should it be the selected site? How people will get there, sidewalks, all utilities? Um, it's certainly not a sprawl example, but it's not exactly in town center, which the previous proposal, different town agencies required that the library be in town center, so this is something different. The second consideration is that whether or not council will wish to have the library proposal, whatever it is, we see the review of the design review board, the um, Wittenberry-McMahon site is not within town center. So town council would have to make that accommodation, should they wish to have design review, review proposal. So, from the standpoint of the infrastructure, I'd be very interested to know how that site would be different from the standpoint of value and expense, and I'm sure you will get to that. So I was just looking for a ballpark date of when we could be expected to make a recommendation, so if I understand you, uh, we're talking February.
Richard, you're muted.
I don't expect the committee to make its final recommendation uh, until after we've done all of the option studies, along with costs associated with them. Um, so, I thought you were talking about identifying remaining sites.
Well, I was talking about that also, because I don't know what the other remaining sites might be, or if there would be additional new sites that have not been considered brought forward also, so just trying to look for a timeframe of how much time the committee will have to consider all of the sites.
Okay, so um, I expect that at, after the March deadline that we have given ourselves for completing all of the option studies, which will have costs associated with each of those options, you will have some time to think about that. Uh, I imagine that we'll be making town council updates as well to bring them along. I'm sure there will be lots of questions asked, uh, and the various commissions in town, including design review. And then you see here a draft study to the building committee, which should contain within it a draft of the final report with a recommendation. Um, that hopefully will go to the committee the very latest, I'm thinking, May. At the same time, it's presented to town council. And then there's a period of time in which we're continuing to get public comment. So, I hope that gives you a little better sense of what we're expecting.
Well, it, it does, and from the standpoint of having some sort of general timeframe for the committee, that would be helpful too, because you know, I've made, I've made these notes, but how uh, we apportion our time and consideration until then, seeing these things coming on board important to keep in mind, thank you.
Greg?
Thank you, yes, uh, yeah, Mark, yes, and then we'll, go ahead, Mark.
Well, just to finish the thought Michelle started here, it's, it's really two separate things. We've got item five, identify remaining sites. We, we really need to finish that and say, okay, we are down to, let's say, three sites. We haven't really officially done that, I think we need to do that, and this is implying we do that by January thirteenth. Uh, that's um, our next meeting. So I don't know if we can do that, we gotta work towards that, and then once we've got it down to, okay, there's X number of sites, then the, uh, the lower item there, the red bar, present design options, you know, Richard and team can focus on just those sites, so I think it breaks down into those, and to those two things that the committee needs to do.
Right, a- and to this point, we don't have any other locations, uh, I think there was one other, was it Seneca Road? Uh, that added to the three that we had previously agreed to.
Well, I believe there's Seneca Road, but there's also Park Brook.
Okay.
Went on Park Avenue.
Yes, okay.
A little slice of, little slice of property.
Right, okay. Alright, so our goal will be to uh, we'll discuss that at the next meeting, if there are any additional site locations to be added to what we have. And I know, Richard, you were looking at and working with the town planner on sites, and I'm not sure where that is, but hopefully in the next meeting or so, we can uh, go through that list as well, and, and firm up what we consider to be our site options, and then the committee can wrestle with uh, paring that down to three or four, so that you can begin your design options for the sites.
Bob has his hand up, and so does Lois.
Okay, and after Bob and Lois, go ahead, yeah, we'll move on, Bob?
Thank you, uh, yeah, I'm taking you back with Mark, yeah, identify the remaining sites on at our next meeting, yeah, I think we need to pare down, decide what the actual final sites that we're gonna consider are for the architects, but at the same time too, we have public information meetings, number eight scheduled between January and April. we have public information meetings, number eight scheduled between January and April. And hopefully, we're going to be able to hold those. And that, and I think that's one of the, one of the times, probably the only time we're going to be able to put out to the community the sites we're thinking about and looking at, what we see as pros and cons for each of them, to get their feedback. So I think it's, it is imperative to, our next meeting on the cer- January thirteenth, we pretty much finalize what the real, bottom line sites. If it's three, if it's four, if it's two, whatever it is, I think we need to come to a conclusion on it then, because we need to be moving forward from that position, because number one, renovation as well as adding on to will cost, the cost will be entirely different than all brand new.
Right.
You know that from the two thousand twelve work that was done. Uh, one of the things that has to be thought about concerning the McMahon site is maybe it makes sense to shut that site down entirely during construction. If that's where the main library is going to be. I'm just throwing that out as a thought. These are the things I think we need to be thinking about, and when we make our decision, January thirteenth, as to what our final site locations are, I think we also need to be thinking in terms of that, because it's going to be difficult enough keeping the Crosser functioning if we're adding on at that location. So also at the same time, if we're not going to be adding on at that location, we're going to be using the McMahon site, what happens with that site in the meantime? Maybe it does make sense to close that site. I don't know, but I think these are the things we need to be thinking about too, when we decide on the thirteenth, what we're gonna do. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Lois?
Um, I think we also need to know what role is the plan of conservation and development going to play? The existing plan says that the site will be in the center of town. Um, it's unequivocal on that topic. There is a new plan of conservation and development in process now, and I was hoping that perhaps we had gotten some information from the town planner about, uh, what that's going to say about the library, particularly with respect to location. And it's important, again, because of the grant, the, um, state grant says that it has to be, our choice of site has to be consistent with our plan of conservation and development. So, um, we need to pin down, what is that? Are we going by the old plan? Are we going by the new plan? Um, and does that mean that any other site than one in the center of town is out, is not, is ruled out to begin with?
Lois, I actually followed up with the town planner. There is, uh, the plan of conservation and development is not being reworked now. It's scheduled to start in next year or the year after. So they're still operating under the existing one you looked at.
And that's very important in terms of, if we're going to get a state grant, the library's going to have to be in the center of town. Unless we get some special dispensation from the state.
Thank you, Lois. Uh, in the interest of time, I, I want to move this. We're at, uh, seven thirty-five, and I know that we have, uh, a couple items left, uh, future meetings. Everyone knows that we meet next on the thirteenth, followed by the twenty-seventh. Uh, we have a new agenda item for committee comments. Uh, we'll just take a couple, recognizing that we are past our stop time, and then we want to get into public comments. But if there are committee comments that folks want to add at this point, uh, please, uh, feel free to do so. Bob?
Thank you. Just very quickly, since the original plan of development, which I believe was two thousand twelve, which really started somewhere around two thousand nine, has been developed, there's been a change in seeking in terms of Blue Hills Avenue. Um, it's pre-scape, did fire on the part of town council, not only this one, but previous town council, to do something to enhance that part of town, different than the way it was even ten years ago. So I think that, uh, the, the focus on the existing plan of development, that everything center revolves around the center of town may not be as germane today as it was then. And I'm not advocating for the McMahon site. I'm just pointing out that there are re- good valid reasons to consider that location that have changed in the last seven, eight, nine, ten years. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any other comments from the committee before we move on to, yeah?
Dunsey has her hand up.
Okay.
Thank you, uh, Nancy. Um, I, I think that, um, it's essential that the library stay in the center of town. I would hate to see the current location of Passer Library um, become vacant and, and not used at all, and then become a blight building in our center of town. Um, if you go through most New England towns, regardless of what state you're in, in New England, you see that the libraries are a part of the center on the town greens by the town halls. And I think that to take, um, the library from that location, um, would really just have an adverse effect on our center of town. I think with, with thinking about locations, um, that because we're still trying to figure out the, the, the square footage, and I know initially thirty-six thousand square footage was discussed, but also, you know, as a result of coronavirus, it's also been discussed or mentioned that more people are utilizing online, um, use. I know that I went to McMahon Library earlier this week, and I believe only two people can be in that entire building at one time. Um, so, you know, I think that for the amount of money that we're looking to ask the people for, we should address both locations.
Right. Uh, thank you. Well done. Uh, Vangella, before you go, I just want to make a general comment to, to the committee. And we've had a, a, a number of people, not only on the committee, but in public are getting site specific. We are not even touching, you know, where we are going to land, uh, with respect to the location of a new library. Uh, I, I think it's premature for us to start advocating and making positions, these are the one over the other. Right now, we're still going through the process, and I want to hold back before we get into the discussion of where we're going to be. Because that is going to be the, the big elephant in the room is where we go, and I think we have plenty of time to decide that, but that is down the line. We, we have a ways to go before we get into what boat or where people feel the library should, uh, finally be situated. Vangella, I'm sorry.
Yes, I was just curious. I'm just listening to the conversation, and what's kind of playing in my mind is, you know, what's, what's the library usage like now in terms of population? Is it mostly seniors? Are we trying to attract more young people? You know, do people tend to drive to the library or, you know, do they walk? So those are the questions that are kind of spinning around in my mind. I think that these questions should, should influence what decision we make in terms of location, because if it's, you know, in the center of town and most people, you know, walk, who use the library, walk to the library, then I think that's something we should consider. If we're trying to attract a younger crowd to the library, then we also should be, should be looking at that. But you know, for me, I don't know what the, 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 the library usage looks like in terms of who really uses a library as it is now, and who do we want to bring in, or do we like what we have?
Right. Uh, thank you. That's a good point. And we will be looking to our staff to sort of give us that information on usage and composition. Uh, and so I'm going to turn it now into public comment. Uh, Nancy, do we have any?
Yep, we have, uh, Counselor Wong, who's had her hand up, so we'll start with her. Go ahead, Counselor Wong.
Hey, Nancy, thank you, Mr. Chair. This, I had a couple of questions earlier. I think I missed a mark, um, when the survey was being discussed. And, uh, I guess my main question in that regards is, I, I heard a lot of the comments in regards to uh, location determination within that survey, and I don't know if that's the true purpose of the survey. I thought that that was more program-driven. And my concern is, I'm not sure how we connect the socioeconomic needs and the, from a social construct standpoint, if you will, um, to the programming needs and, and how that's demonstrated in the questions. I'm not advocating that we include those questions and understand what the purpose of the survey is determining in the future, using it as a data point for, for, to choose our location. So I was just concerned because I thought that we were in early stages and we weren't really on that route quite yet. Um, I'll just have a couple more comments, and I don't know if that's appropriate for those, that first question to be addressed. Um, I'm not sure how this, the surveys will be delivered. I'm sorry if I missed it. I did join a few minutes late. I don't know if it's going to be remote, by mail or door-to-door. Again, we do have a significant, uh, population that has significant barriers to access to technology in order to the survey, so I'm concerned about the bias even in the implementation and delivery. Um, to, uh, Michelle's point, you know, I think she commented on the additional costs associated with the infrastructure from the McMahon site. I think that that is very subsequent to the major flood issues, uh, related to the improvements on Crosser Wetlands location. So I just want us to continue to keep that in the forefront from an architectural standpoint, feasibility standpoint. And then lastly, I am a bit truly concerned about the D E I, diversity, equity, and inclusion piece. I do not hear that being prioritized in a lot of these discussions. And, um, me, and I haven't joined any of the subcommittee meetings. I'm not sure if I'm, that's appropriate, but I would really like those, these, this information to be in the forefront, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And to Bob's point, um, the conservation plan is clearly outdated and sometimes irrelevant. I deal with that all the time from a council perspective. Um, don't mean to harp on this, but equity and systemic oppression is certainly plays a role here. The conservation plan clearly does not prioritize the socioeconomic, social construct, and racial equity pieces that I believe uh, is a huge determining factor in this process of determining, you know, how we build the library, what programming looks like, and what location in eventually, um, when we get there, will, you know, what that determination is. Um, so those are a few of my comments, and I don't know, Mr. Chair, if it's appropriate for the Burgers to address kind of, or yourself, the initial intent of my first question regarding the survey purpose and how we're going to fill the gaps in between. Uh, are we sure we want to use this as the sole data point to determine, um, the location? Because those are some of the comments, and maybe I heard that wrong. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Uh, I, I will ask the Burgers if they want to comment briefly, but I will say, Councilperson Wong, that uh, the intent of the survey is not to deal with location. The intent of the survey, uh, as we discussed it, is to look at need, desire, get engagement, and want people to, uh, get supportive of the library. We are not getting into which of the, you know, quote-unquote, three sites that you prefer. That, that is not the intent of the survey.
Awesome, thank you.
We're really trying to stay away from that, because that's, in my opinion, a different phase, right? And, and we're gonna, we will be rolling this out into the community. Uh, with respect to the surveys, the surveys will be going out electronically, US mail, we'll be working with the schools. Uh, we will be working with patrons who come to the library. There is a whole gambit of avenues in which, uh, the subcommittee has been talking about and addressing as far as distributing the survey to make sure that it's all encompassing with, within the community. And, um, Alan and Leslie, I don't know if there's anything that you want to add to that, but it, it, again, the, the survey is not about location at all. It's really about, you know, a new library in town. And, uh, what do you use the library for? What do you want to see in a library? Uh, and, and so that is really, I think, what we're looking to do. We, we are not getting into site locations, in my opinion.
Thank you for the clarity.
Yeah.
And we have Stan Kasperson.
Stan?
Thank you very much, uh, Chairman. Two quick items. One is the McMahon site. I have not heard nor seen what the size, square footage or acreage of that site is to compare in the table that Ritzard put together of the other sites. That would be useful information. Secondly, on your primary milestone schedule, you have the line item design options to be presented or discussed. The committee ought to have a list of what is included in options under the category design. I can put them in my head, but that ought to be prepared and distributed for the committee to consider, and I would ask specifically, will those design options for X sites include preliminary cost estimates? So that the committee, taxpayers, the council, et cetera, have some idea of ballpark for this, consider, for what's being considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those were awesome questions, Stan.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay. All right. Uh, thank you all again for a, a wonderful meeting, and I apologize that we went, uh, beyond our allotted time. This is almost a two-hour meeting, but I, I think that it was a very engaging and, and very informative meeting. So I thank you all for your time. Uh, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn, but before doing so, I think the mayor wants to close us out.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I think I was stuck for some reason. Um, so I just wanted to say thank you, uh, Greg, for your leadership on this committee. And I want to thank every member of the committee. Um, it's great to look out and see the committee members. This meeting was extremely informative. Um, it was, um, it was a wonderful meeting, and I'm hoping that we've gotten a lot of information to take and ponder. Um, everyone on this committee brings something to it, and this discussion tonight just amplifies that. So I just really wanted to say that, um, to everyone. Thank you for your time, because the investment that you're making on this committee and on your subcommittees will definitely, uh, pay off once our town gets a new state-of-the-art library, wherever that library might be. And if I don't get to see you all have a absolutely amazing new year, and I can't wait to see what this committee does in the new year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. A great closing. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, signify, say aye. Raise your hand. Good night, everyone. Thank you all so much.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
New Year.
Yep. Happy New Year, everyone.